Welcome to the April 24th, 2022 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. Eleven invocation offered by Commissioner Harris followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the City Commission. We come together today to discuss matters that affect our community and to work towards creating a better future for all. Let us begin by invoking the spirit of collaboration and respect, and let us be guided by a sense of fairness and responsibility towards our fellow citizens. May our deliberations be productive, thoughtful, and in the best interest of the people we serve. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Myers, we call the rule.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinzler.
Here.
Mr. Poole.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Brady.
Here.
Mr. Bajali.
Here.
Mr. Waddington.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of April the 10th, 2022. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wadding.
I move that we accept the minutes of the April 10th meeting and dispense with formal reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. If not objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved, and those minutes are approved. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to our podium, share with us your name and address and your agenda comments, and we'd ask you to limit your comments to three minutes.
I'd like your sign here. Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I'd like to talk about the Battery Park contract. This project is going to cost $189 million. There are 68 condos with a 10-year tax abatement on them, 172 apartments, two parking garages, a hotel, and a marina with 530 slips to it. The city is obligated to do the break walls. And I have like three things here. So sharpen your pencil over there, Mr. Brady. I got a lot of questions need answering.
I'm ready.
This TIF, I guess, is going to be 30 years. That's what the contract says. But the contract is blank when it has the percentage. Is the percentage 100%? What is it? Why are we okaying a contract with blanks in it? I want to know if that whole area is going to be TIFed or certain areas in that area is going to be TIFed. A question is, the city owns the land, okay? How can you TIF that and have a tax abatement on it with those condos and everything if the city owns it and I'm thinking the city does not pay property taxes? I may be wrong on that, but I don't think they pay property taxes. So how can you put a TIF on that? City owns land. And the next one is the trolley and water taxi. Now, the developer, he's got a lot of demands in this contract for the city to do here. Trolley and water taxi, we are supposed to be doing. Is the city going to be responsible for setting all of this up? Are we responsible for the cost, the operations, the maintenance of all this? I mean, we can't even take care of our bus service. We're going to go and take care of a trolley and a water taxi? The Pavilion Park, this is a dandy. The contractor has in the contract that if the city decides to lease or sell it, he gets first option. And he wants it as market value. Market value? What happened to competitive bidding on this? That's disgusting to allow a developer to dictate to us what we're going to do with our own land. He's also dictating that we do a priority on the pavilion and get that done and invest a million dollars in it. But he's going to have his hands stuck in that million-dollar improvement. He's going to say what we need to do on that property. So I'm really having a big problem with that one. Not competitively bidding that if we should sell or even lease it out. So that's all I have to say on that, and I hope you've got some answers for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Additional comments from the public regarding agenda items?
Greetings, everyone. Town Hall Market, 20648 Street. I too have issues with the Battery Park offer to purchase or proposal or whatever it's being referred to as because, one, it doesn't state a purchase price. So, okay, then what have we got now? We've got a lease, all right? It doesn't state a lease amount. The developer is having gained the income from the marina, then he's paying, I'm going to say, the old lease amount of about $33,000 a year to then control 30 acres of land, prime waterfront land, and build a bunch of condos deep in his or her pockets while at the same time it is just a pure sweetheart deal for a developer. Developers worldwide would love to have an offer like this presented to them. So I've got an issue with that. Then the option or first right of refusal on an adjacent property that has been up in the air for the past 10 years is what we can really do with it. And I understand that we owe the state monies on that should we actually do something with that property other than a pool site or public use. Why are they dictating to the city, the citizens, our monies for a million? And I think it says a million-dollar minimum investment in the Sandusky Bay Pavilion Site. How does a developer or buyer get to dictate that to us? I also notice in there then the city's responsible for the break walls and then putting the boardwalk around the perimeter of the developer's project. I mean, who does that? No one does that but the city of Sandusky. So, again, it's another demand. And then the Phase II environmental assessment. Most developers would pay for that themselves and any remedial work that needed to be done, unless, of course, the owners of the property were getting that environmental assessment and remediation done beforehand because they didn't have a buyer and they were looking to market a property. And if they knew they had a problem, then they would go out and spend monies to remediate that site. But I don't know of any situation where you're being told that you've got to do that. I don't know what the developer really has invested in this project at all, other than maybe the drawings. And perhaps he's already asked you on the side to pay for the architectural studies. I don't know. Then I also see that all the infrastructure has to be paid for by the city, sidewalks, streets, curbs, water lines, utilities, what have you. When I was involved in a project, we put it all in ourselves, including the water and sewer treatment plants. But yet, the city of Sandusky wants to throw it all in there. I'm not against the development, but I am all for a fair deal, and I don't see a fair deal here. So let's see if I've missed anything that's important. Bada boom, bada bing. The hundred or the million dollars is just crazy. And then it looks like we're going to have liquor licenses or carryouts about every thousand feet because we've got Dollar General stores all over the city, and now we're going to have beer and wine at all of them. Perhaps we should put a couple downtown, make it easier for people to get around. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lamark. Additional comments from the public regarding agenda items?
Hi. Lisa Mazuka, 814 Bardshaw Road. Commission President Brady, on February 28th, you gave a speech. You spoke of putting your arms around and including Charter Amendment supporters, and you stated, "We don't know what is going to happen at Battery Park. None of us do. It's just a concept." The well-funded campaign against the Charter Amendment was quite the show of power, but over 800 City of Sandusky residents need you to put your proverbial arms around them and assure them this development at Battery Park is right for this community. I reached out to the commission via email in March. I asked for a meeting that would highlight the financial and recreational benefits to the residents and allow for citizen feedback to alleviate existing tension in the community. Commission President Brady, you responded with the date of this meeting. So today I came to this meeting, assuming Maru's development will highlight the financial and recreational benefits to the over 800 residents who wanted to vote on their development. First and foremost, I hope you will address the financial benefits to the 21.4% of our city that lives under federal poverty guidelines. That is over a fifth of our population who cannot afford waterfront land, and they rely on this commission to preserve the waterfront land that we have left. Over 90% is privately developed already. Around January 6th of this year, the Greater Sandusky Partnership, an organization supported by this commission, published and sent a survey to Sandusky residents. Question 18 asked, "Would you be more likely to vote no if you heard the plan will ensure the public gets to decide if housing and businesses are built on Battery Park instead of being decided on by the City Commission?" Question 20 asked, "Would you be more likely to vote yes or vote no on a charter change if you heard that it will make it more difficult and expensive to create needed housing for middle-class and young struggling families?" Because of the implications of this survey, I am eager to hear how the current PUD plans at Battery Park will create needed housing for middle-class and young struggling families. Statements have been made by members of this commission that recreational public space in Battery Park is being expanded by this plan. Anyone looking at the aerial of the plans can see that the park space is actually smaller and tucked behind large concrete structures. Will the park space be large enough to host a Juneteenth celebration like the one held in Battery Park in 2021? Will you commit to using the park for Juneteenth celebrations after the proposed buildings are constructed? When the planning commission approved this zoning change, I asked them to please consider the beautiful century-old trees in the park. The ability of trees to improve and maintain the quality of water, soil, and air and remove pollutants from the air is well-known. If you remove the current park from these PUD plans, you can preserve the trees, at least considering the trees would seem appropriate on this 24th day of Earth Month. Today, when the PUD is approved, Maru's plans will become more than just a concept. Commissioner Brady and Commissioner Murray, when you fight your way through Battery Park, please hold to Commissioner Brady's February 28th statement that you will compromise and meet in the middle. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mazuka.
Good evening. I'm Craig McCloskey, 2024 Campbell Street. I'm here tonight for Sandusky and for Sandusky, the group that tried to stop the park being built on in the first place. We have some questions. First, there was a general comment. The residents are under the impression from your city commission here that there will be public meetings regarding the project throughout the project. The first question raised by that is, is the vote tonight the beginning of the process or is this going to be a final say? Will there be further input and discussion? The second question the majority of the people are showing is, tonight's vote final, no matter what? That's, I guess, that's the question. Another question came up in the group contact is, what is the city's financial obligation to this project? What are we as citizens going to put forth as our tax money? What's it going to pay for? They'd like to see specifically where the dollars are going. And then the last question I have from the group is, why is the city responsible for a trolley to and from the park to downtown and to the water taxi when they already have the Jet Express going to Cedar Point? Those are the main questions that come up in our group. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McCloskey. I'm optimistic those questions, as a whole, will be answered and discussed either during the public hearing or during when the legislation is brought before us. So I'm not ignoring each of these and just moving on. I honestly believe that those questions will be answered. Additional comments from the public?
Good afternoon. My name's John Giordano. I'm here representing the Sandusky Sailing Club, which is on the other side of where this development will be. We're not officially, as a club, taking a position for or against, but there are a few things that do concern us with the preliminary plans that are in front of you tonight. One being that the flow into our club appears to be changing. The new ingress and egress from our club would be going through our educational area where we conduct our educational programs for young kids and young adults to learn how to sail and participate in our programs, and that's going to create, in our opinion, a safety hazard for us. Additionally, with the changes to the boundaries, we've had, for many, many years, had a fence that was erected, and it was erected to the city's guidelines many, many years ago. According to the plans that are being presented, we are going to lose access to some of the grounds that we have today, which has a playground, some storage facilities, and some extra green space that are used by our clubs. We've had good conversations with the developer. We're hoping to continue those, but we want this on record that there are some concerns we have. Additionally, as a sailing club, folks may not know this, but we are kind of a hidden gem in the community because we are well-recognized nationwide for the quality of sailors that we produce, the quality of sailing that goes on here in the bay, and the events that we do conduct. This year, we have two national championship events, the J-24s and the Snipes. Those will be bringing in several hundred folks into the neighborhood, several hundred folks that may or may not have been here. As well as next year, we have several events. We have already been challenged, if you will, with the developments along Beg Street and currently with the construction going on with the police station to have access to our facility and getting in and out during these events. As I said, there'll be several hundred folks coming in, a lot of boats coming in, revenues coming in, and we need and would respectfully request assurances from the city that if this goes forward, that we, in partnership with you and in partnership with the developer, that we're going to be able to maintain good quality access to our facilities so that we can continue during this process, conducting these events, supporting our city, and bringing the revenue generation in that we're bringing in today.
Thank you. Additional comments from the public?
How you doing? Ron Parthmore, 416 East Market Street. People say, everybody says they're for progress, they like progress, and nobody likes change. So thank you for leading and all the improvements you've made to the city in the last decade. It's awesome, and I would encourage you to replace these parking lots with development and keep moving forward on the project, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Parthmore. Mr. Oliver, I saw you start to get up. Welcome.
I'm just too polite.
You're beating the rush.
Good evening. My name is A.J. Oliver, 1112 Wayne Street. Been here for roughly 40 years now, I guess, something like that. I take my hat off to be more polite, except I don't want to show off my melanoma scars from all those years of sailing, so I hope you bear with me on that. I want to stress, too, at the outset, I'll be brief here, but I'm not representing any organization other than my own personal views. So I'm not here on behalf of anybody else. So back in, around bicentennial time, which is a great event here in town, by the way, as part of that process, we put together a community master plan. And I think probably just about everybody in this room took part in that process, to the best of my knowledge. Well, here's what we came up with for the Battery Park area. It shows the historic green area being pretty much 100% preserved. And some of us weren't that wild even then about more development in a public shoreline park, but we were prepared to bit our teeth and go along with it. That was my attitude. Bit our teeth and go along with it because it was, it really was a community process that preserved a century-old historic park. So this is it. This is what we came up with. Should anybody want to see it, I'll pass it around. I want it back, and this is going to go on my wall at home. The current plan tosses this fairly out the window. Nearly all of the historic green area is going to have a condo tower on it. Maybe, one, I'm not exactly sure. I think for this to happen, for this change to be made with no explanation, no justification, no public meetings is really very unfortunate. It's very unfortunate. So I could go along with something like this. I'm not, I would do it a little bit differently. I would retain the walking track, people and dogs. Who's going to chase the geese is my question. But a lot of us could go along with something like this that the community came up with. The current plan, I just can't, I just can't be silent to go along with the current plan. That part, that part to me is, when Webb Sadler put that thing together back in 1924 after the tornado ripped up the industries that were in that part of town, he set that aside as a park, public park. It's been that way for 100 years. The anniversary, the 100th anniversary is going to be next year, and I think we should have a big darn party down there, music and kids' games and everything else, if there's not a condo tower on it, that is. Okay. I'd also like to talk very briefly about the process that we're engaged in here, and that is when, if you go around the country, as far as I know, around the world, and waterfront parks get developed and privatized, doesn't matter where they are. It could be Sandusky in 2007, it could be Port Clinton in 2014, it could be Benton Harbor, Michigan. There's always going to be opposition to it. There just is. So I know, I suppose you knew that opposition was going to come, but you decided to tough it through and put it through. I'm disappointed that the commission did not answer my earlier appeal for civility in the Charter Amendment election process. Sorry, but your side was name-calling, disrespecting people. I think you hired people to go online, social media, and trash us. Maybe you didn't hire them, but they were certainly your allies, being extremely rude. I asked the commission to please, asked that that be toned down, and nothing happened. And I will say to you, several of us, maybe me on one or two occasions, I try to be good, but I think I kind of lost my politeness and civility a couple of times, and for that I apologize. So as this process goes forward, I would again urge the commission and everybody else to be civil about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Additional comments from the public?
Chris Whedle, 403 East Adams. The residents of Sandusky are being asked to give up parkland. In what's before you today, there are a number of requests in there for the public to fund development for Battery Park for residences, for development. I have not seen, and I do not know, is there a revenue projection for this project back to the city? If so, where is it? The residents are being asked to give up property. No business gives up something without getting something back. The whole financial of this has been basically hidden from the public. What we know is that the commission approved Maru's, assuming, the lease of Battery Park. In that lease, 3% was to come back to the city. So is the city going to get 3% of every condo sale? Is the city going to get 3% of every monthly rental on an apartment or on a room? Is the city going to get 3% of the food sales? Is the city going to get 3% of the liquor sales? Or is that 3% out the window? As citizens, we have no idea because this whole thing has been done behind closed doors. The question is, what are the revenues that are going to come back to the taxpayers of the city from giving up this property? And I have not seen any projections anywhere from it. And if there aren't any projections of revenue from it, why are you doing it? If it isn't going to be a long-term benefit to the residents, if there are not going to be income coming in on a regular basis for years to come, why give up property? Is there a revenue projection? And if there is, please share it with the residents. Thank you.
Additional comments from the public?
John Fike, 629 Columbus Avenue. I just got two comments. Number one, I'm very much against the, I guess, not so much the development, but the loss of the green space down at Battery Park. I've been in town my whole life, it's always been a park down there, I'd hate to see it go. I can understand some development goes in behind it, but to lose the park is something I'm very disappointed in. The second thing I really didn't understand is how this came about. As an example, when the city building was developed, Maro's Brothers was called and said, "Hey, we got a sweetheart deal for you. You're going to make a whole boatload of money. Are you interested?" Obviously, they were. Obviously, they did. Then when...
Mr. Fike, let me just stop you for a moment. You are not just alluding to, but you're making a statement that there was something nefarious that went on with a sweetheart deal. We called up Maru's, made a sweetheart deal. Do you have some information that I'm not aware of?
I know that Maro's developed this.
That's just a fabrication on your part?
It's my opinion.
It's fabrication on your part?
It's my opinion. And same thing is happening down at Battery Park. How many people, how many developers were contacted, come in and said, "Hey, we got a sweetheart deal for you"?
I don't think any were contacted and said, "We have a sweetheart deal for you." I don't think Maru's was called and said a sweetheart deal. Now, that's my opinion.
That might be, but it's my opinion, and I just think this thing was handled wrong. It's, you know, no one knows what's going on other than you, seven gentlemen, and staff. The city residents certainly do not, as we've been loaded, we've been in the dark. So that's my opinion. I'm against the development that's losing our green space. You want to develop the property and behind it, keep the green space up along the water, I'm all for it. But how this is being handled, specifically what we're losing, is, I'm totally against. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fike. Additional comments from the audience? If not, we have a public hearing regarding the CDBG 2023 Action Plan. That hearing will be conducted by Nicole Groey.
Good evening. I'm Nicole Groey. I'm the CDBG Administrator and with Community Development today. We're briefly going to go over the 2023 CDBG Annual Action Plan. We're briefly going to go over the 2023 CDBG Annual Action Plan. So the Community Development Block Grant Program, a little bit about that. The city of Sandusky is an entitlement community, which means that we receive funds directly from HUD or the Housing and Urban Development Department. In order to be eligible for those funds, we have to meet one of the three objectives listed below. So the first one is to benefit low to moderate low-income families. The second is to aid in the prevention or elimination of slum and blight, and the third is community urgent need due to a disaster. Very briefly, some of the 2022 accomplishments, there were some demolitions that were done. There were a couple scheduled and a couple that had been carried out. As far as code enforcement, there's been over 1,000 eligible inspections and then quite a bit of abatements by both owners and the city. As far as fair housing, we hired a fair housing consultant, and they have answered at least 53 calls to date. Looking at public facilities, the daylamps parking lot is currently under construction. It should be worked on this year. There were also nine streets that were repaved. The sections are listed in the PowerPoint. As far as food pantry program, we did this with our COVID-19 funds that we got through the CDBG program. There was $42,223 for this first round. Actually, this is the third round, I apologize. Third round, OGO received $20,000 for a Be Well Food Locker program. They've had over 95 people served for that. Father's Heart Church received several grants for their youth and general food pantry, and they average about 200 households per month that get served through that pantry. Care and Share received $4,718, and they have a My Choice Box program. And that was geared towards the senior towers downtown. To date, there's been 126 people that have been served. As far as public services, Erie County Senior Center received $46,000, and they served over 6,000 meals with over 60 residents served. Father's Heart Church, as mentioned earlier, they received general public service funds, too. So they had $16,000 for their after-school youth program, and they've had at least 17 children involved. And then the city recreation staff completed a number of activities, and there's a whole list of the ones that they did this year. There's been over 200 children that participated. On the far right, there's just some before and afters that were done for demolitions. Briefly, where we're at in this timeline of the action plan, we are at the second public hearing. At the next commission meeting, May 8th, we will look at the legislation and hopefully pass that. That way, we can submit it to HUD by May 17th. Very briefly, this is the amount that we are receiving for program year 23. We're receiving $708,428,000. Above, it shows how much we can spend on administration and then how much we can spend on public services. I'm going to briefly go through these general categories for program administration and planning. It's proposed that $120,000 be set aside. The $52,000 in carryover will be moved over to clearance and demolition, which is actually acquisition nuisance abatement at the end of fiscal year 2022, which will end in July. Fair housing, it's proposed that another $10,000 be added to retain the contractor for that service. For public facilities, $265,000 will be set aside for roads. For community development, it's suggested that $40,701 be set aside to address urgent needs as they come, not urgent needs, but needs that the community needs throughout the year. For code enforcement, the $90,000 is set aside, and that's for inspections in eligible areas. Public services, I'll cover more on this in the next slide, but it's suggested that $51,264 be set aside for this, and that's the max amount that we set aside for public services. For youth programming, there will be $55,000, and that's how it pays for staff rehab. That is with the lead paint abatement program, that will be $50,000. And then the last category is acquisition and nuisance abatement at $26,462.80. And any category that has any remaining, with the exception of program administration and planning or public services, will remain in those categories. Otherwise, the public services and program admin will be placed in acquisition and nuisance abatement. As far as public service subresimbiates this year, it's suggested the following be funded, and the legislation for this will come later after the plan is approved in July. So the Erie County Senior Center, it's suggested that they get $25,000 for their Meals on Wheels program. New Jerusalem Church suggested that they receive $6,500 for their heating and cooling shelter. And then OGO would receive $19,764 for a food coordinator distributor. So we had a public comment period, and there were some comments that were received. There were consolidated planning action committee and also through the public. So some general suggestions were that transit stations and bus shelters and benches be added, lighting at parks be looked at, repurposing of playground equipment be looked into, awarding additional housing rehabilitation funds be considered, and an exterior painting program. So the plan, as I said, will be up for adoption in the next commission meeting on May 8th. I know I went through a lot of information. If anyone has questions, I can answer them at this time.
As this is a public hearing, we'll entertain questions on this topic from both the public and from the commission. Questions for Ms. Groey, Ms. Johnson?
I have a suggestion when you do this, to get a better breakdown of this. Oh, okay. I'd like to see a better breakdown of the CDBG money. For instance, you just have public facilities here at $256,000. I would like to have a breakdown as to what you have in mind for that $256,000. And you have like community development for $40,000. I mean, we don't, you're just plugging in numbers here without a breakdown. Is that possible for next year to get a breakdown, a better breakdown? And also, I was disappointed that the streets and sidewalks were kind of decreased in the money for this. And so I, I'd like to see something better next year on that. But I would like to see a better breakdown.
Okay, to answer those questions, we will look into doing that in the future. I can't guarantee that's how they're going to do it. Historically, it's always been very broad, but I'll definitely look into doing that.
It's too broad. You put 200, that's a lot of money, $256,000, public facilities. What is it?
Which is the roads that I circulated to everybody on the CPAC Committee. It's the resurfacing.
That whole thing's going for streets?
Yes.
We've got to have more street money.
Additional comments, commissioners, comment for Ms. Groey?
Mr. Chairman, I had one comment on the, I don't know if it was the second slide with the inspections.
Yep.
It's listed as, I believe, 1,033 eligible inspections. Is that completed, or is that-
Those are in CDBG eligible areas. We literally have to make sure it's in the eligible sector. Yes, yep.
Okay.
Additional comments, commissioners? Comments from the public? Not, thank you, Ms. Groey. Declare this public hearing closed. Next public hearing that we have regarding the planned unit development of Battery Park. This hearing will be conducted by our chief planner, Erin Blair.
Thank you, Commission President Brady. I have a slideshow today to walk through this. We don't do planned unit developments every day. This is a big, complex project, so my presentation is going to focus on the process itself of a planned unit development and then give you just a really simple breakdown of the preliminary development plan to make that really clear. So today, we are conducting a public hearing for 701 East Water Street. For the record, that's parcels number 56-61377.000, 56-61377.001, 56-3, 56-61377.501, 56-01377.001, 56-01377.002, 56-01377.003, and 56-01377.000. I always read those, so thanks for your patience on the seven parcel numbers. The planned unit development process itself, the diagram on the right shows this very basic, we're in the orange step number two today. The first step is for Planning Commission to evaluate a preliminary development plan to determine if it's consistent with the objectives of the PUD. That's what we did in November of 2022, which was a public hearing as well. If they perceive that those objectives are fulfilled by the PUD, they recommend the change to City Commission, and that's where we are today. If City Commission approves this today, then it would go, the next step in the process would be a final development plan to be brought by Planning Commission. So today, we're at the City Commission, holding a public hearing, which is the same process as any rezoning, evaluating the zoning change. If it's approved, then Planning Commission will review a final development plan. And that cannot stray in any significant manner from the preliminary development plan that was approved by Planning Commission and would be approved today in that process. And it also must be brought to Planning Commission within 18 months. The objectives that Planning Commission evaluates a planned unit development against are listed in our zoning code, that's 1155.01 in the ordinances. And the reason planned unit development is a zoning category for complex projects like this is because it allows us to think about a mixed-use development that is going to organize the, be protective of the scenic vistas, geological features, the natural topography, encourage a maximum use of choice of living environments, a more useful pattern of open space and recreation areas, an efficient use of land, and make sure that the development pattern is in harmony with all the components. And the PUD also states in its purpose that it wants to create a greater population density in undeveloped areas than are reflected by conventional zoning standards. So those are the objectives that Planning Commission evaluated to bring their recommendation to you to approve this today. On this site, so in red outline, you'll see the parcels that are considered Battery Park. So this does not include what's under lease on the Salem Club, just what's in the red outline there. It's currently zoned Downtown Business District. It's currently primarily surface parking lot and public park. The current land use is 54% surface parking lot, so a little over half the size, six-and-a-half acre surface parking. 42% of it is public park and open spaces. That's five total acres that includes a 2.67 acre Battery Park. So that's what everybody considers Battery Park, is that 2.67 acres piece of land. Tennis courts are about an acre at the southern portion of this site. And 4% of the site is marina, that includes guest services, restaurant, and private outdoor space. So their private pool and the marina are highlighted on the red in the right graphic. The site also includes 20 acres of submerged land, and that's the water in the marina. There have been several visions for development, including market studies over the years for this land. The most, most recent ones, and they go back further than this, but the most recent ones are 2007 Marina District Plan, 2017 East Waterfront Vision Plan, 2018 Bicentennial Comprehensive Plan, and the 2021 Adopted Downtown Master Plan, which is shown in the graphic on the right. All of these concepts are united. They show mixed-use development on this site that celebrates the bayfront location, an extension of the city's street grid to make sure development here doesn't feel private and different. It feels like it's incorporated into the rest of the city. And in all of them, it talks about how important public access to the waterfront and the water's edge is, and the inclusion of public park space. The preliminary plan that's in front of you today does include those components that the previous plan showed. So it's a walkable mixed-use development. It maximizes the pedestrian experience. It revitalizes the Battery Park public space, and it's fully accessible publicly along the waterfront. It extends the city's street grid with Water Street and Market Street, and then there's a new street, Sandusky, they're calling Sandusky Harbor Drive, in the development. Just a quick overview of the site plan. This is zoomed in to focus primarily on the development, so it doesn't include the piers, just so you can see it a little better. The bottom floors of the primary structures that are highlighted in red are retail, marina, and hotel. So those activate the ground floor. It makes it more like a mixed-use development, a downtown development, so people can access restaurants and retail spaces, go to the hotel, attend an event at the conference center. So all of those uses are activated, and it makes it feel like a really rich public space that's interesting to be at, which is components of mixed-use development design. Upper floors are occupied by hotel rooms, residential and residential. So the yellow is residential and the purple is hotel in this diagram. And it also is integrating the parking to maximize public open space. So one of the biggest advantages of doing a development this way is instead of each use having its own parking lot, all of those parking areas are consolidated. So there's public parking on the public streets, there's public parking in parking garages, and then there's parking for each of the land uses and the development in those parking garages. The parking analysis run by planning staff at this space, it's more than 1,000 parking spaces, and it satisfies our parking requirements via, by the ordinance. And the preliminary development plan also increases the maximum, the amount of public open, open space on the site. And this is what we've heard a lot of questions about. So the site is about 12 acres, and open to the public will be 9.17 acres of space. That's everything that's purple in this diagram. That includes the sidewalks, the public realm on the public streets. The Battery Park portion of this development itself is still around 2.7 acres. It's the same size as the park today. So this plan increases public space because the public park that's towards the north end of the parcel is the same size as what we have today. Then they're increasing with the boardwalks around the water's edge and the public plaza in between the boardwalks and the water's edge. So I just want to confirm that. And then also, a little bit more details on the development. It is a residential mix of condos, which about 68 units and 172 apartments. It's about 120 to 130-room hotel. And then first floor gross retail square footage is about a little more than 57,000, almost 58,000, and the marina has plus or minus 530 boat slips. So that's the program components of the whole development in the preliminary plan. If City Commission approves the rezoning tonight, that's what would trigger the next step in the rezoning process, which would be a final development plan having to be submitted to Planning Commission within 18 months. And per our PUD ordinance, the final development plan must include all the information required on the preliminary plan, that's all the documents you've seen thus far, a schedule for development, specific metrics on all aspects of the development. That includes the dimensions, the property lines, the areas, topography, so much more minutia of the specs of the sizes and shapes of things. The engineering feasibility, studies and plans for all the utilities, the description of the design principles. This is an advantage of a PUD process where we get a lot more of a design review embedded in a PUD than we would in a regular site planning process. So that includes what all the buildings and streetscapes are going to look like, the height of things, the quality of the open space, kind of amenities they're going to do, the size of parking spaces, all the things, lighting. And then preliminary building plans, landscaping, and any legal statements used to control the development, maintenance of land improvements, including those areas which are to be commonly owned and maintained. So the, what will be open to the public will be legally in writing as part of that final development plan. And this is all, again, in our ordinance. In addition to those conditions, planning staff added a list of other conditions. Our typical, number one, that all applicable permits must be obtained. Number two, that the legal responsibility and the method of maintenance of all open spaces, including the streetscapes, shall be specified to the developer before the approval of the final development plan. So we'll have that as part of that process. The building standards submitted will include dimensions of architectural features of all the facades and specification of materials. So we'll get a really good idea of what these buildings are going to look like. It will be in writing. It will be part of the final development plan, what materials they're going to use, what those dimensions are, so you don't get a gorgeous rendering and a flat building that we can see that the renderings are going to match what they're going to build. Number four, that the detailed landscape plans submitted as part of the final development plan include an interim landscape treatment and garage screening for the future building site identified on Main Street. And I'll point that out in case any of you didn't have that on their radar. And I'll point that out in case any of you didn't have that on their radar. So on the bottom right of this diagram, there's an L-shaped building that's kind of whited out. That is expected to be a future building that would be part of this approval process. So it would be green space for the first, we don't know how long, when that's specified in plenty of things. But I just want to know, what's that green space going to look like in interim before there's a building on it? Because when you're coming up Meg Street, you're going to see the parking garage. So they can make sure that it's pleasing from an urban design perspective, that it's not, that they can activate that green space a little bit. So that's what that condition is asking for. So again, for consideration tonight, Planning Commission has recommended the approval of this amendment to the zoning map for 701 East Water Street. The application is to amend the zoning map to planned unit development. At the parcels that I read at the beginning of the presentation, the zoning change will enable the site plan approval process for the proposed Battery Park. So this is not financing. This is just the physical development on the site, and it's very typical. I know we have a lot of questions about it. It's very typical for this process to come first because the engineering and the architecture are one of the most expensive things at the beginning of a process. So you lead with the site planning, and then you follow with the financing and all those things that, I know, in the development agreement, things like that, that everybody seems to be really interested in understanding better. And that was approved unanimously by Planning Commission on November 22, 2022. And then I would give it back to Mr. Brady to open up public comments.
Yes, this is a public hearing, a lot of 10 questions from the public regarding this. Comments or questions from both the commission and the public?
Is it just for zoning comments or just zoning?
This is to comment during the public hearing on the planned unit development.
Commission President Brady, if I may. The developer team is here, and they would love to share a presentation with you about this. I know that they can do that as part of the public hearing, so I would defer to your leadership as whether if you want to invite them first or how you want to conduct them.
I welcome that, I'd like to see that presentation now.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Paul.
Never mind, we moved on. Any questions you may have had about?
We'll get back to those questions at the end of this presentation.
Introduce myself, Chip Maru, Maru Development Group, here tonight to get this plan approved, PUD. And I just want to introduce my architect here, BoCon, and then our landscape architect. And I'm going to do a presentation for you, okay?
All right, good evening. My name is Denver Brooker, I'm with BoCon. Happy to present this project to you with Colin Maves from MKSK, our landscape architect. See if I get this going in the right direction. There we go. Just framing the conversation a little bit. Aaron did a really nice job of setting us up so we can probably move through parts of our presentation faster than we had planned. So the existing condition, largely parking lot, and a continuous waterfront, much of which is fenced off right now with chain-linked fence. We're looking to transform that in the spirit of the 2021 master plan that Aaron outlined. Few key features just to point out quickly. Yes, it's a mixed-use project. Yes, there will be continuous access to the waterfront, all public. There will be a large, flexible public space called Battery Park. And we are, through the way we've developed the new streets, connecting it back to the blocks of the rest of the city. Three key planning principles that we took to heart off that master plan. Connect to the water, encourage a vibrant mixed-use neighborhood, and leverage your community assets. These are simply examples of how those kinds of ideas can manifest themselves in a waterfront park from the public access along the waterfront, the upper left. Large, flexible, open public spaces, the upper right. A mixed-use development, so a combination of retail and more public spaces at the ground level with residential above, and then active pedestrian-oriented walkable streets. So what Colin is going to do, she's going to walk you through in detail the planning, and then we'll come back and look at some architecture.
Good evening, everyone. I am a landscape architect and planner with MKSK, and we've been taking a look at this site plan with all of those goals and intentions in mind, and really with an eye towards how do we diversify, activate, really just enliven this public open space for the residents of Sandusky, for the residents of this new community, and how do we really open up the waterfront to everyone? And so as part of that, we took a look at the existing site as it exists today, how it rests within the city fabric, what are the alignments to the streetscapes, looked at how it connects to the adjacent piers. And what you can see in these two diagrams are a comparison of the amount of open space dedicated to parking lot today. Battery Park is the purple rectangle on the left, and then there are the courts on the right. And what we're looking to do with the public open space is reorient it and reorganize it so it is focused out towards the waterfront along all edges. Also, what we looked at is the organization of the site, how you would achieve getting to the waterfront today. That is done either by making your way through the parking lots or going along the sidewalks that are along the waterfront edge. All of the black dotted lines are existing fence obstructions that while you can see the water, you can't actually get down, touch the water, put your feet in it, really feel like you have access. Once you get out past the Marina edges, you can, at the breakwaters, finally get that 360-degree experience of being out on the waterfront. But primarily within the site, you're always behind a fence condition. And so just looking at a few of the conditions as we're moving around the site. Miggs Pier, along Battery Park. Within Battery Park, you can see some of the existing trees. I'll come back to these later. We are looking to save a number of these trees with the plan. The Water Street Pier, or what will be the Water Street Pier. And then the parking lots today. And so as we looked at the public space and public access and how the site is organized, really focusing on drawing the city fabric out and through the site. So connecting Miggs Street to Miggs Street Pier, connecting Water Street up and through the street to New Water Street Pier, and creating an entire accessible, what we're calling the public access boardwalk along the entire outer edge of the development. So all of those areas that were shown in purple are all intended to be publicly accessible, connected to public streets, and also connecting in with the new and very beautifully completed Sandusky Bay pathway. I was out there looking at it today. And so what we're trying to achieve with this new organization of open space is a variety of experiences, of places for different families, different age groups, different ability groups, to come out and experience the waterfront. So open spaces where you can have events, smaller, more contained spaces that allow for free flow along the edge, but also provide some buffering for dining spaces towards the inner edge. Open promenades that take you out towards the waterfront, not to fences, but perhaps to guardrails that allow for safe negotiation. Open piers that can either be activated with benches or plantings, and a variety of seating elements all along that waterfront. And also potential for open kind of views as you're getting out towards those edges. And so if you look at the two comparisons, the intention here is really just to allow for ease of access, variety of access, and overall, a new experience of the waterfront all along this really beautiful and highly activating space for the community. And so I'll move around the open spaces now, starting with the most prominent one. Basically, what we've done is taken the area of what was Battery Park, that rectangle, and rotated along around to the most prominent point on the site, allowing for a large, open lawn for those gathering events. Also, you can see a smaller kind of event space that allows for accessibility. The large trees you see on this plan, those are existing trees that are intended to be saved and maintained on the site. This also allows for direct connection up to the pier. And along that pier, some intentions for kiosks and extending season, as well as seating, some plantings, and connection to a potential water taxi site. If we come down the site now, now we're just to the kind of south of the Battery Park area. We're looking at the Marina Park portion of it, so another smaller, more intimate public space, something akin to like that Atlantic Wharf that I just shown, where you have a central space for gatherings or perhaps a performance, a clear boardwalk pathway that allows you to negotiate along the Marina and have access to the water, and also more private spaces for dining and spillout. And also, you can see it's intended to have connections and pedestrian free flow between these buildings to allow for even more access. Coming down even further on the site, we're looking at Miggs Street Pier, which is aligned with Miggs Street, a second pier option that allows for access out to the breakwaters and the potential for art installations a little bit quieter in its activation. And so with that, I'll pass it to Denver through some of the experiential.
And this is how it all comes together. So this series of renderings is going to show how the network of public spaces and pedestrian streets interconnect with the building program. Aerial shot, looking with Battery Park in the foreground, the Marina wrapping the development. To the right, you see condo building, and to the left, you see the apartment building. Get a little more detail here. As Aaron pointed out, and kind of the reddish color here is representative of ground floor retail. This is the ground floor plan. We have the two parking garages that on either side of Water Street. Water Street is going up and down on this page, and Meg Street is at the bottom of the page, going left and right. If you move up to the ground level in the yellow, this is representative of apartments. So a curved street to the south in the development, the apartments are actually at ground level, and then everything else you're seeing there, white, is still retail. Moving up, combination of residential and then purple for the hotel. Just moving up through the plans, hotel having the most floors, and then just some big-picture metrics for the project in terms of the number of condominiums, apartments, hotel keys, parking spaces. And we'll walk you around the development. So this is Meg Street, looking north towards Meg Street Pier. On the right is the hotel. And then just beyond, it's one of the first parking garages that has a retail base that sets up the intersection of the street. This is actually on the sidewalk, again, still facing north, recognizing that there's a bike path that parallels the street here. And now we're a little further north at the intersection with Water Street. And you see the garage there to the right with ground floor retail activated. Kind of takes on a waterfront industrial look. So it's not just a parking garage, it brings presence, gateway to the development. It's all the way out at the end of Meg Street Pier. The thought is that as this continues to develop, it'll be kind of a destination. We're currently depicting this lookout tower and a covered pavilion. And then moving back south, walking back toward the development, we see the other side of the garage, which we're currently envisioning developed with a kind of mural across parts of it. So again, it's visually animated, and then the base of it also animated with some smaller kiosk-type retail from bike rentals to other things like that. Now we're back on Water Street, facing east. And then turning around the corner, looking a little southeast to prospective hotel building. The other thing, as you notice going through these renderings, is our intention to develop this with each building having their own character and a little bit of variation in terms of the materials. So it's not a singular development in this respect that everything looks the same, intentionally making each of the buildings a little different. Here, we're seeing entryway drop-off for the second parking garage that is to the south of the hotel. And then moving a little further down Water Street, then looking back west. These are the, no, this is looking east condominium building. See, also here, this is where all of these sidewalks, the pedestrian public ways, are fairly wide with the intention of being able to have easy access along the street front. Also have room for cafes and outdoor dining, extensive landscaping. Now we're almost at the end of Water Street, and here we have the two-story, and the plan's was labeled Building 3, it's a retail pavilion. And then turning about, the apartment building. Another view of the apartment building, looking north. This is an interior courtyard within the apartment building, so these are amenities areas for the apartment residents. My second view. This is from the apartments, looking, get my directions right, east, across Battery Park with the condominium building there to the left. And at the end of the Water Street Pier, a concept around a pavilion that would be at that end. And as Colin mentioned, opportunity for kiosks along that pier. And as we're walking back, this is Battery Park. And then along the waterfront to a second flexible public space, a little more intimate than Battery Park, also with opportunity for performances, and expanded outdoor dining at the perimeter of the building. Views from some of the upper terraces. Both the condominium building and Marina Services have rooftop pools. A view from the Marina, back to the buildings. And then moving back a little more, and back where we started. We're open to any questions about any specific point of the plan or the architecture.
As this is a public hearing, we allow the public to ask questions regarding the planned unit development. I know we've had several questions, and I think almost all of them pertain to the project agreement. So I would ask you to frame your questions regarding, not the project agreement. We'll have an opportunity to address those questions as that legislation comes before us. But we're in a public hearing for the rezoning, the planned unit development.
Hi, John Giordano with the Sandusky Sailing Club again. I just have a question. The plans presented, especially on the landscape, if we look at Slide 26, it diverges greatly from what was presented to the city and what is in the city's agenda. And it's actually taking land that the Sailing Club leases from the city. We use that for our Sadler Sailing Pier, as well as parking from there. So I think there's a discrepancy in what's being presented in the landscape decks and these decks and the information that's been presented to the city as for what the formal plan is going to be.
And it's my understanding, and I'll reach out to Aaron Blair for clarification, that what we're looking at tonight in this planned unit development is a preliminary plan? And I feel certain that-
I understand that, but Ms.-
Blair.
Hang on, I'm sorry. But they had said that it could not vary significantly from what was presented tonight. What they presented tonight is different than what is in your packets.
Ms. Blair.
Through the commission president to the question there, the, the parcels of what's in the sailing club's lease and what's in Battery Park lease have been studied very carefully. And there is a sliver along the Water Street Pier side that the sailing club has a fence on that the gentleman mentioned earlier, that's going to need some nuance of, of where that can end up and what kind of public access will be needed to create the amenities on the Water Street Pier. But that the only segment in question, it's not in the sailing club's lease, it is City of Sandusky property. Uh, so that is expected to probably have a very minor adjustment from what is on the plans. And then he also mentioned earlier, the access question, and we have spoken very strongly throughout this whole process to make sure that, you know, we know they're bringing big boats, sailing boats into that property. They're, they need to get in and out of that. So how that exact entrance works out might change minorly from the plans that you see today. Uh, so both of those things are, are well known in the conversation. Um, but I can, I can confirm that the site plan and the documents you have, the documents that are presented by the team and what I presented and what's in your agenda packets all match what is under lease by Maru's.
Ms. Blair, I'm, I think what you're giving us is the assurance that we're going to stay on, that this project is going to stay on our property. We're not, we're not going to get on somebody else's property.
Yes.
Regardless of whether this is a, uh, preliminary plan or final plan, we're going to stay on our property.
Correct.
I, I'm good with that assurance.
Mr. Chairman, hang on for a second. Would you bring up your drawings that he's referring to and just kind of show, I'm not sure where you're talking about. It sounds like you said, well, I'll go ahead and let you find it, go back to what you've presented to us. And if the gentleman would kind of help here so I, we can understand what we're talking about.
So there is, there's a fence along here that's currently being used by the sailing club that's perceived to be outside of what their lease covers. And there's some access points that the development team is going to need. And that's what they've been, that's my understanding of what they've been talking about, but the-
That's incorrect.
The-
If I may, the parcels that, at question, um, the actual parcels, the fence is, uh, encroaching on land that is not in the sailing club's submerged land lease. Um, I think there's a, there's a discrepancy where the fence line is, but I know that the, the developer and the sailing club are having discussions, will obviously iron all that out. But the plans involve only land that is not in the sailing club's submerged land lease.
How much of the-
I can't speak to the renderings.
How much of, how much of the-
Commissioner Poole, just a second, Commissioner Poole, with law director speaking. I will, I will give you the floor when he's done.
I, I was, I'm sorry, I was actually done.
I thought, oh, you are done?
Yes.
I thought you were. How much is the fence on their, on our property? What are we talking about?
I, I don't know off the top of my head.
I mean, it's fine if it is, I just, just, may I suggest that, that first of all, none of the people who have spoken here before, uh, have been opposed to change. This is all about folks don't know what's going on. And we're just trying to correct that so that everybody understands we're on the same page. This is an incredible project from my perspective. But I do understand why folks are unhappy because absence of information, you have to make it up as you go along and folks get annoyed by that, I understand. So please, let's work through this. And I do specifically want to know, is the new access road, is it going through a building or is it just going beside where you're working? Cause that's a sticking point that matters. The rest of it sounds pretty good.
To your question and the other question, if I may.
I, I would like, I would like to hear, uh, our side of the story, I guess. I'd like to hear Ms. Blair or someone to speak as to Commissioner Poole's question regarding the access to the sailing club.
I got to answer that. Um, two things. One is that I did meet with the Commodore, um, months and months ago about the land and a couple of people from the sailing club had no problem where that land is. It's not really leased by the sailing club. It's not leased by us. It's a piece of land, it's in no man's land. So, um, I've met with them, they have no problem with moving that fence around and working together where we need to land that fence. Um, the driveway access going into the sailing club, that's up in the area. Whatever they need or want, we, we've talked to Commodore about that and will land on the right spot in order to accommodate them for their access into their property. So that's not been etched in stone at all.
And I'll confirm that the area we're talking about that's along the pier is not pertinent to the rezoning. It's not pertinent, it is, if that fence moves a couple of feet, it's, it's not within the rezoning parcels that we're talking about today.
You're not rezoning the area that's in or around that fence?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay, if I can clarify, uh, my comments were not regarding the fenced in area. If you look on your diagram up there at the top, there's a set of pier, of, a set of docks. That is our sad, our sadler, sadler sailor basing, but that is our Springer Pier. If you look at the diagrams that were presented by Maru's, they had that walkway going out there and that entire set of docks and the parking for those docks was being removed. My understanding is, and I'm the rear Commodore, the bridge and officer of the sailing club, is my understanding is that is sailing club leased land. So I'm saying there's a discrepancy in what's leased by the sailing club and what was presented in the landscape drawings as that would be the development area.
Mr. Heil, are you getting this?
I don't think that's correct. I think you're just, are you, like-
If you bring up their slide, it was number 26 in the landscape slides, it had that going all around, all along that finger out to where our exit from the pier is.
Are you talking about, for, on this, it's really hard to do this on a blown up screen, but if, if you're talking about where the proposed pier would go to the right, sorry. I think there just might be a, like a, yeah, go back one. So that, that, that's just showing access. They're not, that's not part of the plan, right? Yeah. I think there's just a, yeah, there's just a misunderstanding on, this is not a site plan.
That, that, that blue area is, is showing unobstructed access-
Correct.
Having nothing to do with the plan.
Correct.
Okay.
It's not intended to mean that I'm thinking of that.
Yes.
Same with the other finger.
Mr. Oliver.
Just a quick comment on zoning. I don't know, I don't know if it would help to, uh, move the discussion forward if you realize that that's a terrible spot for a water taxi. I mean, it's a really terrible spot. It's going to get beat up in Northeasters, probably unusable, uh, part of the time. We get, you know, we've had crappy weather this year, so, you know, you can try and put a, the city paid for water taxi out there if you want to, but you ought to study that first. There's, there's some really, there's some very choppy, uh, waves out there, which, that's, that's why the boats, all those boats you see are inside the wall. You want to put that taxi outside the wall. Terrible idea.
Additional comments, uh, commissioners or the public on regarding the plan unit development?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman.
I, I just wanted to, uh, mention that both parties did a nice job of presenting. Uh, and Aaron can correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, until we have a final plan approval, uh, things can kind of change a little bit. But once you have final plan approval that will come down the road, everything is locked down. And if they want to do any changes, you have to have a public hearing in order to do that. Is that correct? With a PUD?
Yeah, there's a process laid out in the ordinance for changes to the preliminary plan or the final plan as part of the PUD, which would include public hearings.
And, and one other question, and Mr. Brady is aware of this because, uh, I'm surprised he still takes my calls, I've been bending his ear. For one of the Maru's, uh, entourage, the 60,000 square foot of retail, it, that, that kind of just, uh, I'm wondering, number one, what, what is the breakout? Is it restaurants and retail? And, and I realize with the T-mud, you have to include a percentage of retail, but-
Probably, um, a little less than half restaurants and then retail.
Do you think, uh, retail is viable in 2023, brick and mortar retail?
Yes, well, it's going to be mostly, uh, service, um, stuff like that, bike rentals, stuff like that, um, different type of retail. So you have to have that type of retail in a mixed use development. And what you have by the water, you get different types of retail than your typical retail. So we were up at about 80,000 square feet, even more than that, we kept on knocking down. So that's where we got to about 56,000. And the brokers we talked to nationally and locally, that's a good number to land on.
And you think you can fill that?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Meiser.
I just want to, um, follow up with Mr. Bajalies and Ms. Blair's, but, um, she, Ms. Blair mentioned that they have 18 months to bring a, a final PUD to the planning commission. If that doesn't happen with 18 months, the zoning, if we do pass it tonight, reverts back to what it is right now. So it's, that's when, uh, you'll start to see the more real story, a real rendering of what the project will look like than tonight. Uh, the reason we have to, uh, get off to do this this evening is because, uh, first you got to get the schools to go onboard, which they held a special meeting the other night and passed unanimously. And then you have to apply for state grants and different funding sources that all need us to approve a preliminary project. And then, then that's when we start getting into the negotiations of financing and all the details and what's, what things will look like, just for background.
Additional comments, commissioners or the public?
Since this is a zoning plan and the zoning plan involves dedicated retail, I think this question is pertinent. How many of the storefronts, retail spaces have been filled at the BGSU building? None. How many of the storefronts have been filled at the, at the new HoGriff building? None. There are over 20 other additional empty storefronts in downtown Sandusky. How is developing this park magically going to fill those storefronts, which businessmen already own in town and are sitting empty? And then you're going to approve more storefronts with the hope that they're going to be filled? Where is the demand? You don't have the demand. You approved this zoning plan for these storefronts. Does the developer have anybody lined up to fill them? Is there, are there any guarantees? Are we just going to see more empty storefronts, which makes downtown Sandusky look even less viable? This is a very, I think a huge concern. Nothing says that a town isn't doing well than to have empty downtown storefronts and you've got over 30 of them right now. And you're talking about using taxpayer money to develop more retail space with absolutely no guarantee that A, it's going to be filled, or B, there's going to be customers demanding what they have to sell.
Additional comments? Commissioner Poole?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is, I, I have some thoughts about, questions, I guess, about the trolley going to Cedar Point. I guess from whoever, what's, what is, how's that working for, for Cedar Point? They're doing it now at Jet Express.
I, I'm, my thinking, Commissioner Poole, is that that is not a question that is pertinent to the plan unit development, but may be pertinent to the project agreement because I believe there is some concept of that in the project, in the project agreement, but I'm not sure that that applies to the, uh, to the rezoning, uh, whether they have a trolley or a taxi.
That's a thought. Would you, then would you go back to Aaron's slide on the objectives of PUD, please? About third slide that Aaron had in her presentation on objectives. Back maybe one more. Oh, oops, went too far, maybe went too far.
I'm sure I said the big Y.
I'm not sure. There you go. Uh, F, please read that. And, uh, that applies to money. And it applies to us have, if we're going to put in a trolley, section F means that we can talk about it. I need to understand how this is gonna, gonna work because it, are you locked in on having us transport people back and forth to Cedar Point? Is that, that important to you? I suppose that's one way to get to, get around it. But it's germane, section, it covers section F.
Through the commission president to Commissioner Poole.
All of the money we spend is germane in this conversation.
You're, you're speaking of item F. My understanding would be that the PUD, what, what it's stating here is that you, the PUD's purpose would be to allow greater population density and that the development needs to justify why that density is valuable for that place and how it is compensated for by private amenities and public benefits. That would be more people is more traffic. So we have to make sure we have parking. More people is more demand for public park and recreation space. We have to make sure we have adequate, open, public space. That's how I would read that, not necessarily about the costs of a water taxi, which is a very specific question that's, I would agree with Mr. Brady.
Just want to talk about all of it in general. I don't have a problem with it. I didn't want to get that deep. I just wanted to ask him if he, how much he is locked in on having a water trolley and how much he thought it was going to pay, pay for itself. And that's, that's really, we're just deciding that since we're the one that's going to pay for it.
Mr. Chairman.
How important it is to him. And it is germane because it's part of this.
Mr. Maru, do you have a comment?
That's all. And if he didn't need, no, go ahead.
It's pretty important for the project just to tie Cedar Point, downtown Sandusky and the islands together. So more people that come in, use the property, the more people that come in and use the property in the, in the development, the more successful it will be. So it's pretty important. Yes. There's a lot of people that go to Cedar Point and never come into downtown Sandusky. Millions of people actually go to Cedar Point every year and very few come down to Sandusky downtown. So it allows that crowd to come into downtown Sandusky and use all of downtown Sandusky's too, so.
Commissioner Meiser.
Uh, you know, this doesn't have a lot to do with zoning, but, uh, that I believe anyway, but we, when we sat down with Cedar Point, when Cedar Point moved their division headquarters out of, uh, Sandusky and to the Carolinas, we knew that we were going to be hurting a lot of income tax, one, because the divisional people all left with their income tax. And two, we were a little worried about the commitment Cedar Point had to the community. So we sat down and, well, I didn't, but, uh, the city manager did and, uh, Mr. Heil did and Eric at the time, and negotiated, uh, and we raised the taxes on Cedar Point to the maximum amount that we can get now, which has increased our budget significantly. When we were going through those debates, we had to agree with Cedar Point, some of the things that, uh, they would, that we would work towards increasing, getting more people back and forth on that. Those were those concepts came up, the trolley, the, the ferry boat, uh, getting kids over to the beach from Sandusky, getting them, allowing them to get over to Causeway in a STS bus or whatever it is. So a lot of this stuff happened even before this project was, it just got pulled into it. And we never agreed, uh, that the city would run any of it. We just said we'd work towards that and we'd use some of the money that we generated from increasing their tax dollars and to tend to making that happen. That's where, remember it happened.
Additional comments from the public or from the commission?
Thank you for your presentation and I'm really excited to hear that you're going to incorporate some of the trees into the, um, plan. I have a couple favorite trees and I, I know that that's not, I, it's just me. I don't know how many people in this room have a favorite tree at the park, but I have two of them. So I don't know, maybe I could stay after and you could show me which trees are keeping? I don't know, maybe, if you have time. It's okay, you look busy. But, um, also I wanted to know what the prices would be for renting the apartments and the retail, um, cause I know a lot of small businesses that don't locate to downtown because we have high rents down here. And I know that's kind of, um, nationwide rental rates are increasing, but if you can, um, in any way bring some of the affordability back to downtown Sandusky, that would be great. And I think that, um, there's, I like the idea of the piers and the water access, but there's electric at that marina. I don't know if it's still going to have electric, but you can't put your feet safely in water where there's electric. So I'm hoping there's a solution to that. I don't know. But, and how will marina access be controlled without the fences? Um, I know that boaters will have security concerns. Um, and hopefully I know people that have their boats down there and there's been a little bit of talk about, um, just about, you know, who will have priority to those docks, um, once the condos are built. And I'm happy the neglected piers are getting attention. Thank you.
Mr. Maru, I, I wonder if you could speak to the accessibility. I, I know you guaranteed us of a great accessibility throughout this project, but certainly, certainly you're going to want some security around, around the boat slips.
Um, yes, if you can see on this drawing here, there's only two accesses into the marina off the, um, board- off the boardwalk. So right now, you have the access to marina all the way around the boardwalk. You're going to have two accesses that will be gated, so allows then the rest of the boardwalk to be open to the public. So right now, that's a redesign of that marina.
And I don't think anyone expects to have public access. To walk up to a boat, no.
No, no, they're paying rent there, so they have public access, like they do now. But it's only in two points. That's why we're able to open up the whole boardwalk and piers. Which opens the way up. Right now, it's all fenced off.
Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Bishop Poole.
Just a final comment. In looking at this overall, the battery park is, looks the way it has been and will unless we do something. I think this is an extremely ambitious project. Very happy that Ms. Maru and company are willing to come to Sandusky and take a gamble on this. I think when it's all said and done, I did want to ask you, the facades that we saw in those pictures, is that what you're planning to put in? Are those buildings going to look like that, pretty much? Is that what you're expecting?
Yeah, yeah, that's the intent.
Okay, that's what they were. Okay, fine.
We're getting all the details.
I almost forgot that. Thank you, because they're beautiful. That was very nice. I think at the end of the day, we're going to like what, what turns up. The question is whether or not it's sustainable. The retail is something that you're going to have to fill. Likewise, you're going to have to make the boaters happy with, with whether there's a fence around it or not. And so the only question, and I think, and I'll defer to the next item, is how much we're, we're asked to pay for. That's really the key. But whether this should be, should be approved as a PUD, I can, I can accept, I can accept that it should be.
Additional comments or questions? Ms. Blair.
One additional comment. It's, it's pertinent to this and something I hear frequently in the community about the affordability of units, new units, new housing, the need for housing. There is a study that Bowen Research is conducting with Firelands Forward right now that is going to help us understand better our housing demand in Sandusky. Overall, bringing more housing units will help fill that demand, and that's at all price points. And I wanted to mention to you, and I can share this, that MIT published a study recently, and they found that new market rate housing in low-income areas actually decrease the rents in nearby units by about 6% relative to the units near the development. And they saw in migration from low-income areas. So the new buildings absorb high-income households and increase the local housing stocks substantially. So there's a body of research building showing that housing is not, there's not one single solution to housing, but we are looking at lots of solutions for housing. This is one way to add more places to live in the city of Sandusky, which overall is in high demand. And it, it should help by increasing the housing supply, increasing available places throughout the city as well, not just at this site.
She kind of built me up for a question. She knows, but I'm used to being on the other side of the table, asking the questions regarding developments and things of that sort. I'm originally from Columbus, so we're very focused on affordable housing, mixed-use developments, and trying to incorporate those things. I'm for the development. I think it's going to be something great that's going to transform downtown. It's going to invite folks to come and kind of sell us even more than we're selling ourselves as a year-round destination rather than just a tourist destination. So my, my main point is, is there any direction or any communications or negotiations on trying to include or incorporate affordable units that are targeted at roughly the 30% to 60%, or 30% to 70% of Aryan median income, or AMI, of our statistical condition? So I'm trying to gear towards that on, you know, we need the 172 units of apartments that they're proposing, the 68 condos. We're all experiencing housing crisis nationally. And yes, by somewhat flooding the market with a swath of units is going to definitely help there. But I really kind of want to focus on either what turns out with our financial development agreement or with the zoning change in density, on trying to include those affordable housing units, whether it's 10%, 15%, which is something common we did back in Columbus on a lot of these developments, and trying to get that included and focused.
Sir, could you give your name for the clerk?
Yes. It's Mark Harper, and I'm from 2015 Foxborough Circle.
I've been remiss at getting those names, but I think up until this point, we've pretty much known everybody, haven't we? Which is a good thing.
AJ Oliver again, Wayne Street. I'm just trying to move the project forward here as something that's possibly more workable. If you look at the west side of the Meag Street Pier, that would be a really good spot for a water taxi, much easier to get to. I remember, it wasn't that long ago, where Commissioner Murray and I and a few other people saved that dock for, to be used for something like this, when a certain entity wanted to sort of grab it, shall we say? Thank you. But it's, it would be a good, good spot for a water taxi, right, Commissioner Murray?
I remember the history. And thank you for bringing that up. I'm glad we did that.
I'm just giving you a hard time.
That's okay. We're good. That's why we're here.
If not, I will declare this public hearing closed. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Not objection, the motion be approved in hearing, no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have six items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any consent items to the regular agenda? Ms. Myers, will you present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, liquor license for Millennium Operations LLC. Item B, liquor license for Family Dollar Stores of Ohio LLC 27280. Item C, liquor license for Family Dollar Stores of Ohio LLC 21967. Item D, budget amendment number two. Item E, approval of change order number one in final, CDBG East Water Street Parking Lot. Item F, approval for agreement with Sandusky State Theater for the Red Wagon.
Commissioners, having heard these requests for liquor permits and ordinances, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meiser.
I move that we, we do not file an objection or hearing for consent agenda items A through C, and that we do move to accept agenda items, ordinances D, E, F, and declare that they take a media effect in accordance with Section 14.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I realize that we are powerless to vote down or reject the liquor licenses for the Family Dollar Stores. I wish you were otherwise. You know, we talk about food deserts that are created in a city. It's these types of operations that create the food desert and make it difficult for us to bring, difficult, if not impossible, for us to bring a grocery store into Sandusky. Adding liquor sales to, to that just adds to that problem. But this is, this is something that the state has pre-ordained. We do not have the ability to resist that. But I do hope that in the near future, the commission will entertain some legislation to require stores that provide dry good, dry food goods, to provide a healthier range of options, so that we do provide better options for our residents who really do need to, do need to get to grocery stores that have healthier options. So, but I anticipate we'll take that up another day. At least I will suggest that we take it up another day.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meiser.
I was going to bring up the exact same thing in old business. I didn't, I didn't know appropriate time to have a discussion, but somebody did bring up about putting liquor sales, like, in the residential neighborhoods. And I am really opposed to that, and I think I'd like to work with you on that committee to bring our healthier foods into these communities. But again, the state, it'd be really tough for us to go and oppose and, and call a hearing to not allow them to do that.
Does seem rather strange that we, we have these items before us, and yet we don't have much of a choice, and it, or it doesn't matter, I guess. Ms. Myers, you call a role on those liquor permits and ordinances?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That was on the motion, and now on the liquor permits and ordinances.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Those liquor permits and ordinances are passed. Turn to our regular agenda. Ms. Myers, you present item number one.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds for the purchase of a shelter from Game Time DWA Recreation Incorporated of Harrison, Ohio, through Omnia Partners Purchasing Program for J.C. Parks South, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
Much needed, I think, Mr. Worrellings here tonight from the Rec Department. This has been a long time coming. It's a, it'll give a little shelter, and then we have a lot of basketball tournaments and ball diamonds out there, so this will be much needed, so, thank you.
Additional comments? Ms. Myers, you call a role in that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two. And that would be number one of item number two.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a 2024 Freightliner M2 106 cab and chassis from Valley Freightliner Incorporated of Parma, Ohio, through the State of Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Streets and Traffic Division, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meiser.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance, declare it takes immediate effect in full accordance with Section 14.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, it appears the truck is the easy part. Buying the, buying the rest of it is twice as expensive.
Yes, Mr. President. This is the sixth and final two-ton salt truck that we've been working to replace since around 2015. So we're hoping to get this truck this year, and the second ordinance on here is to get all of the snowplow equipment. I did want to mention that the existing vehicle is in good enough shape to be used as a pretreatment brine truck. So we are going to have two brine trucks out, which, that'll help out significantly rather than offloading that vehicle. So we're hoping to get this by the winter of this year, but there's no promise that it'll be on the road by then.
The truck that is replacing, is it, is it giving us good life? Is it aluminum body? Is it, is it, is it full of bullet holes or what?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This truck was recommended to be replaced last year, and as you can imagine, the wear that salt has on a regular vehicle, if it's the vehicle that's actually hauling it and applying it, it's, it's not good on the body of the vehicle. So it's good enough to hold the brine tank, but it's not, it's not good enough to have confidence in that it's going to last another full winter or two.
Additional comments, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Just to repeat a point I've made before, but I think it's worth keeping in mind when we spend this much money on equipment. We don't have the number of complaints today that we did years ago regarding snowplowing and other city services, because we've largely replaced the fleet over the last couple of years. When, you know, if you go back 10 years, we were holding those machines together, Mr. Klein knows all too well, with duct tape and baling wire, sometimes literally. And so we're in a much better place today, and that's why we're able to provide better services, and it's a good investment to make.
Ms. Myers, you call a role in that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two slash two.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a 2023 single-axle ice-control truck equipment package from Henderson Products Incorporated of Bucyrus, Ohio, through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Streets and Traffic Division, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I move for the adoption of ordinance two-two, under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second discussion. Myers, you call a role in that ordinance.
Yes, Mr. President.
On that motion.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional design services with Arcadis U.S. Incorporated of Toledo, Ohio, for the Follett Street and Mill Street Elevated Water Tank Inspection and THM Removal System Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, it appears that this project, this engineering, got a little more complicated.
Yes, we figured it's probably a good idea to design the project before we bid it out. What happened was, is we had the inspection from a firm that actually came in and gave us a list of equipment and stuff that needed to be replaced within these two tanks, and we submitted TPA, told them that we were going to just basically replace parts and maybe add a couple more minor things, and they came back and said, well, we need a full set of engineered drawings and plans and everything else. So it was back to now having to hire somebody to prepare those engineered plans and actually bid the project. So I do want to preface this with the, we did get approval in February to go out to bid, but we may have to come back later once we get those final plans done to either amend that. We're hoping that it still stays under that cost that was approved back in February. But we'll, we'll keep the cost as low as we possibly can to make sure that this equipment goes in and can continue to scrub the water.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, you call a role in the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number four, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional design services with Bramhall Engineering and Surveying Company of Avon, Ohio for the East Perkins Avenue Waterline Replacement Project in conjunction with the East Perkins Avenue Resurfacing Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Meinzler.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance and declare it takes immediate effect in accordance with Section 14.
Second. And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the role on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number five, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed amending the official zone map of the city of Sandusky to rezone parcels number 56-01377 dot 000, 56-01377 dot 001, 56-01377 dot 002, 56-101 01377 dot 003, 56-61377 dot 000, 56-61377 dot 001, and 56-61377 dot 501 located at 701 East Water Street for a residential planned unit development, approving the preliminary plans for the proposed planned unit development, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Murray.
First, I'd like to note the incredible cruelty of a law director to require Ms. Myers to read all of those parcel numbers. I don't know why we do that, but apparently we need to, but I would be very happy to make a motion to approve item number five pursuant, and pass it pursuant to Section 14 of the city's charter.
Second. But a motion and a second. Prior to discussion, I would like to add to Mr. Murray's comment that you may find that cruel, but it is still a lot easier than having the clerk name all the chemicals that we have to buy. All she's got to do is read numbers for heaven's sake. Discussion.
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Murray.
I can't tell you how excited I am to finally be on the threshold, because it's a long process to go through yet, but we are on the threshold of redeveloping this underutilized, really disappointing piece of property in a lot of ways. I go by it twice every day. There's almost no one there, ever. I understand an attachment to that particular piece of property. I have attachments to my own particular pieces of property, to parks, to buildings, but it's our job here in the city, at this table and staff, to think about the long-term best interests of the collective public. I think we've been doing that. We just had a campaign, a vote. It was hotly contested, but the electorate said in a very definitive way, go forward. Continue to work on this. You guys figure it out. We want you to figure it out, and we're doing that, and we will do that over the course of the next months, because there's a long process to go through. We've heard about a TMUD application. I can't remember exactly what TMUD stands for, but the first word is transformational, and there's a process, a very competitive process, and this is, these are the first steps in being able to compete in that process that will, that potentially will result in very large awards for the benefit of our city. But once this is completed, this in many ways bookends a lot of the work that we've been doing. It's my belief that once this is completed, this development is completed, the city's momentum forward will be unstoppable. Right now, we're continuing. We have to have lots of goodwill, lots of people willing to come to Sandusky. Thank goodness for Maruus Brothers and their willingness to make a bet here. This is a lot of private money that's coming to the city of Sandusky. If it doesn't work out, and I really hope it does, the assets will still be here. You can't take them with you. You know, you don't look, need to look too much further than the harbor development. That first developer didn't make it, and I don't, I don't mean to bring bad tidings, of course, but the point is that the assets remained until they were put to good use. Yes, I don't know that the retail space will be filled. That's not my job. That's the job of the private sector, to figure that out. We don't have, thank goodness, the command and control economy. We have dynamic capitalism. We have people coming forward, doing studies, doing research, and making their best bets, and we go forward as a democracy, as a country that has dynamic capitalism at the center of its economy that allows for those kinds of chances, and frankly, as a whole, we benefit greatly because of that. So I'm, I'm very excited to be able to vote for this. I think this is a keystone in the development of the future of the city of Sandusky. I think it's very well thought out. I'm looking forward to the conversation that will follow, because I know there'll be a lot of conversation, but this is a very, very important step that we're taking tonight.
Additional comments, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Poole.
First of all, I want to, want to thank everyone that, that came and spoke for and against this. I noted that, and this was the first time the public had a decent look at what's been presented, and for those folks that left and those of you who are still here, now I have an opportunity to stop and think about what you just saw and start picturing and envisioning how this can be, be positive for the community, and I want to especially note that, that Skip Oliver, Oliver immediately came up with a suggestion of how we can make this water trolley work, and he's, has been, he wanted to leave the park the way it was. And the point I'm making is, when you bring the public into what you're doing, give them a good explanation of it. It may not be what they want right away, but we live in a town where people actually, if you give them the information, will think it through and come up with the right answer. And I realize everybody's not going to be happy, but I hope over time, people will see that this is, compared to what we have right now, that this will be a benefit to a lot of people.
Additional comments, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Meinzler.
As long as we're here already for a long time, I might as well throw my, but I, I got to go back to a couple decades ago, the fire department run volume was about 3,000 calls a year, and the staffing was 60. I think the fire department, this is just an example, same as the police, same as the human services, all the other services that we provide to the community. The run volume has went up exponentially to almost 7,000 calls a year, and they have 12 less firefighters than they did decades ago. That's when I started to realize that the city either had a burn down, or we had to start bringing back the 10,000 or 15,000 people that moved away over the last few decades. Census went down. We've got 21.5% poverty, according to Ms. Mazuka. We're just trying to figure, and, and answer a couple more questions. The storefronts, 30 of them are empty. Well, that has a little bit reason to do with how difficult it is to get developers in here to look at a project like this. It, it's not like we had RFQs and RFPs all flying in the mail wanting to develop anything. Thank goodness Mr. Maruus stepped forward and is willing to take this on. Hopefully he has a good market analysis and a business plan moving forward, and this thing works, so I, I'd like to see that happen, and I think as far as John, Mr. Fike's revenue, I mean, that's still pretty early, but that's the whole idea why we're doing this. We, we have to generate some more revenue to pay for the services that our community needs, and I hope it works. It's a, it's, it's a big chance, but it's calculated risk, and I'm willing to take it, so hopefully we can all work together and make it happen.
Additional comments, Commissioner?
I think that cities, much like people, have defining moments in their lives, and I think in the city of Sandusky, tonight's a defining moment. This project is a defining moment for our city. I made a statement on February 20th regarding meeting the people that objected to this project somewhere in the middle, getting our arms around them. That wasn't just lip service. I think tonight is the first step in doing that. That's what that public hearing is about. Mr. Heil assured a concern that I had and many other commissioners had, that this isn't the end of the road for this project. This is the beginning of what's going to be a very long road to get to the finish line. Mr. Heil assured me that we are going to have seven, eight, nine more pieces of legislation to get this across the finish line. Between now and then, I expect our planning department, I expect the developer, to look back at tonight and listen to the comments that both we made that support this project and those people that maybe don't support it. I'm, I'm thinking of all the people that had concerns about this project, and their concerns still haven't been alleviated. Can, can we come all the way towards you? Probably not, but I think we can meet you somewhere in the middle on this issue, and I think tonight is the first step in doing that. I, I, I'm thinking in terms of an anchor, corporation or a party in this is certainly the Sailing Club. We want to make absolutely certain that we're not stepping on our friends' Sailing Club. That's very important. I think that's important to everyone in this community. They've been here, they've been here for a lot of years. We're, we're going to find a way to give them good access. We're going to find a way, if they're on our property or we're on their property, we're going to figure out how to adjust that a foot or two feet, whatever we have to do. That's, that's just one instance. Tonight, you've heard several, several concerns about several people, and I'm counting on all of us pulling together to get this across the finish line, but this is the first step in a very long journey.
Additional comments, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, will you call, roll on that motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Second.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Second.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number six, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed approving a development agreement with Battery Park Sandusky LLC relating to the mixed juice development of the Battery Park property located at 701 East Water Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Meinzler.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance and declare it takes immediate effect in Section 14 city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Heil, we've had about 20 questions that may probably pertain to this piece of legislation. I, I will start with, with my chicken scratch notes here, and I would ask for you to just share with us some explanation for, I think I understand this issue, and I think our commission does, but I would like you, the public, to understand how we can award a TIF on a piece of, of property that is owned by the city.
Sure. So TIFs are, I guess, I think the question was, how, how does it work with the valuation for the, for the property taxes if it's, if it's our property? It would work just like any other private parcel. The existing property taxes paid on, on the parcel get paid as they do now. The TIF is only on the improvements to that, so the valuation that's added above and beyond what is currently there today. And this, for this, the schools recently on Thursday approved that 100% of that additional value would be in the TIF, which I think also answers a question as to why there was a, a couple blanks. It's because we were, we were waiting for the schools to give us the finalization of that, of that detail, but it will be 100% of the new improvements that would be included in the TIF, and that, that payment would then be split between the project, the developer, and the schools, and with the schools receiving 16.5% of that additional new value. Did that answer that question? I know there's a few more.
I believe that it does. I, I think, I think the concept that was being put out there was, the city doesn't pay taxes. How can, how can the city generate a TIF? Well, the reality is that the, the person that owns the lease is developing the property. That is, they're going to be taxed. That becomes a taxable entity, and at that point, their taxes due, they're tiffing those taxes.
Correct. The TIF is only on the improvements, so it's, it's the, the taxes that the, the property would have generated if it goes forward can be reinvested through the TIF into, in this case, the schools and the, and the project itself.
Additional question, Mr. Heil, that I, I know you have the answer, because we talked about this earlier today, and that is regarding the, the million-dollar obligation from the city to make a million dollars worth of improvements on, on Sandusky Bay Pavilion. Can you share with us the concept there, or why that, why that, why that is in our project agreement?
Sure. Oh, sorry. Yeah, so there's a, a commitment from the city to invest in one of our city-owned parks that happens to be adjacent to or nearby the project. It was in discussions with us and the developer. Obviously, you know, we're, we're seeing a lot of potential investment in this area. Both the developer and the city would like to see investment in, in the public asset nearby, so folks can take advantage of it. It does, it leaves up to the city the timeframe and how and what those improvements look like. It is completely up to our discretion how we make investments into the city park. When we do that, all of that legislation would have to come to City Commission for your approval, so you, we would get the public input as to what improvements, and so long at, the only contractual is that we at least make a million dollars in improvements over however long we decide to do that with City Commission's input.
So to be perfectly clear, our developer is not dictating to us what improvements we make, nor is he dictating the pace of time that we make those improvements.
That's correct.
Question regarding the water taxi and the trolley. Does this project, does this project require us to provide either of those services in this project?
It does not. It requires us to help try to make them feasible, so there's no financial commitments that we own a water taxi or a trolley in this, but it, it specifically for like the circulator trolley loop, it says the city will use reasonable efforts in an attempt to establish a circulator trolley loop. It's specifically written with, with discussions with the developer, and we appreciate their, they're working with us on this. These are, these were asks from the developer that, as you heard today, they're important to the project, and they're also community assets, but figuring out the actual details of those going forward are contingent on funding and other things, and so this, this development agreement is specifically gives the city the discretion to do that through City Commission, through future legislation, to make sure that it's financially feasible and make sure it's responsible, and it will work and all of those things, and identifying funding sources and things like that. That's how this is designed. It's designed so that we use our best efforts with the developer to try to make those assets happen.
And, Mr. Howe, I wonder if you can, probably working from memory, I know I saw this document written down to me, and there are seven or eight more pieces of legislation that will come before this commission in the future.
Correct. The scope of this project and the kind of some of the nuances, whether it be in submerged land, would require some additional pieces of legislation. Also, the schools approved the terms for the TIF, but we would also have to work some legislation to make sure that we set up the mechanism so that their pilot payment gets paid to them, which we recently did, actually, with our last TIF for the Cook Hogrefe Building.
Question that I have, and perhaps for you, perhaps for Ms. Reader, is, can you share with this commission and with the public, what is our debt obligation in this project?
I've been talking a lot, it's your turn.
I'll take the easy one. At this time, the only commitment that we have is that we'll make the million-dollar improvements to the Sandusky Bay Pavilion.
We're not selling bonds?
There's no debt.
We are not taking on debt for this project to go forward?
Correct.
Excellent. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I'm all for this project. I agree with everything Mr. Murray, Mr. Poole, everybody around this table's been saying. But I do have a problem with the development agreement. I mean, why would we agree to a 99-year lease without negotiating the terms of that lease upfront? We give away all our leverage, so that bothers me. And the other thing is, is I didn't know what the TIF breakout was on the percentages until just this moment when Mr. Howe revealed that to me. So, I can't vote for this agreement with a clear conscience.
Commissioner Poole?
Yeah. The, gets to the trick. Where do we get this $1 million from that we're paying for this? Work on the pavilion property? Where does it come from?
So, through the commission president, Commissioner Poole. At this time, that's not been finalized. At this point, we're not making any commitment or expending any of those dollars. That'll be future commitments, as we've stated. There's no timeline to this. As they work through the project, we will also work with them and the public and the commission to figure out what those improvements are and how we're going to fund those at those time.
Okay, so you don't know what it's going to be, and you don't know where we're going to get the money for it. Okay. Next is, and I think a lease of, until somebody comes up with a better, a reason for it, a 50-year lease is reasonable with a renewable clause to it. I don't see why 99 years. That's like five generations, and I don't think anybody's even built a building that's living 100 years anymore. So, just, that's something that I think needs to be discussed. Let somebody else talk, and then I'll come back.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Just to respond to two of the points that have been made, we've invested billions of dollars in our city parks, so I don't have any problem with making a commitment to investing a million dollars in this park. It is a gorgeous piece of property. It is the best undeveloped piece of city park property, and will always be city park property. We're legally bound, when we took the money, I don't know, 20 years ago, 25 years ago, whenever that was, this will always be a public park. And so, it requires reinvestment. It will be an outstanding park with a little bit of investment. We'll probably spend a lot more than a million dollars. Where will that money come from? I don't know right now. That's probably for a future commission to decide. We have a lot of money that we've found to invest in parks. I think we'll find the money to invest in this park. What will the improvements be? I don't know right now. And that is going to require its own planning process to decide what the public wants, what the best options would be, gaps that we have in our current line of offerings, a lot to go into that. But I'm perfectly comfortable making that commitment, because it should. It's the right thing to do. We need to improve that property. Another thought that I would offer, I'll defer to Mr. Howe, or maybe Mr. Maruus would answer this question, but it's my understanding that you can't get financing for anything less than a 99-year lease when you're working on submerged land. I think that's just a bank requirement, but perhaps others can speak to that.
Mr. Howe, Mr. Maruus?
Yes, that is correct.
Requirement of the lender?
Requirement of the lender, especially for sale condos, if you have to have a 99-year lease.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
One, Ms. Bajali, is against this ordinance? The park? I mean, the...
The project?
Okay, just the whole project, or just the sliver of the service up? Are we voting on that right now, too?
We're voting on the project agreement for...
The project agreement, okay.
With Maruus for the sale.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, never mind, I get it.
Additional comments, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Additional comment. I do have some concerns with the circulator trolley loop. The concept of us committing to running a trolley for six blocks, maybe I don't understand this, but when I'm cutting transit by $300,000 and then I'm signing up for a trolley loop to go to downtown from Battery Park, in perpetuity, it just doesn't, that needs to be renegotiated. The million dollars spent on the service up, I don't have a problem doing that. I recognize and believe we need to do something spectacular to match what they're putting on Battery Park. But agreeing to this now and having no idea what I'm agreeing to in terms of what the planning department they're going to do is a problem. So, I'm probably not going to support it. Let's talk about the trolley loop. Why are we absorbing the expense for a six-block ride? Or if I'm just missing...
Mr. Howe, can you speak to the language in the project agreement?
Sure. As I spoke just a few seconds ago, we are not required to establish a circulator trolley loop. We're required to use our best efforts to work with Maruus to try to establish a circulator trolley loop.
So, that is not a fixed...
It's not a fixed thing yet, and it's intentional.
What does it mean? What are you going to do?
It means that we will use our best efforts to attempt to establish a trolley loop with the developer.
I've already got a bus that goes past that place that goes downtown. So, we've already accomplished that. You put things in here that, I'm not a lawyer, that I recognize don't need to be in there. I've already got a bus that runs down there, so there's no reason. And if we're going to do this, I'm more than happy to put in a trolley if it's profitable. There's just unknowns here, dealing with the legalese, it's like, we're responsible. I don't, I don't, I don't trust, I don't believe that this is that easy, that we really, that you put something in there that we don't have to do. Doesn't belong in there, then. Just agree that we're trying to put you in a trolley, I'm more than happy to do that. If it isn't going to pay for itself, or it doesn't have a way to work, then we don't have to do it. But I'm concerned about what's written in a contract that's contestable later on that we agreed to today.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Let me explain how I view this. I view this as an agreement to negotiate in the future. We're going to use our best efforts to sit down, figure out how to make this work. It might be that we buy a bus. I don't know. That's up to another commission. It might be that we buy a water taxi or part of a water taxi. I don't know. That's up to another commission. But we'll sit down, and we'll talk about it. We'll see what makes sense. And if we ran a bus, I wouldn't have a problem with it, because we're sort of already in that business. If we ran a water taxi, I think we're a bunch of fools. We're not in that business. Somebody else is going to have to run the water taxi. But it's a good faith, it's an agreement to sit down in good faith and talk about these issues in the future. That's what it is, and that's all it is. And it doesn't, in my opinion, obligate us to spend a dollar, but we do have to go back to the table and talk.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bajali.
I don't have a problem with the trolley. I don't have a problem with the water taxi. I don't have a problem with the development. I think Maruus is a fine organization, and they've done their market studies. They know what they can do and can't do with the property, what will work, what won't work. I do have some question about the retail. I do have some question about absorption rates, you know, that you got the Apex Building. If those condominiums ever get built, they're going to be high-dollar condominiums. You've got Cifaro putting up units out in Perkins. You've got Redwood putting up units, and you're putting up units here at Fike. So, I do think about the absorption rate. But I guess, what my question is on this agreement is that the lease, why would we give up 99-year lease without negotiating what the amount is back to us? We lose all our leverage. And my question would be, everybody sitting around this table, if you own that property, would you do that deal? Would you give a 99-year lease and leave the amount of the lease wide open? You lose all your leverage, right? Or am I thinking wrong? I mean, I'll ask the law director.
I don't believe that's the case.
Don't you want some leverage and some sort of negotiation?
I believe the city is well-protected by this agreement, and it's intentionally designed that way.
But how do you increase the cost? And once you've given the term, what's their incentive to give us what we want?
That would be for our future negotiations on the ground lease and for City Commission to approve, which you would have, we'll stay in.
One of those things that comes back to the commission for a vote, and if you don't, you know...
But if I, if somebody gave me a 99-year lease, open-ended, and said, "We'll negotiate it down the road," all my incentives gone. I already got the term, I already got 99 years on that property. That's just my thing.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I would say my perspective on that is that we haven't given the 99-year lease yet.
But it's in the development agreement, isn't it?
We're going to sit down and talk about it and prove it with respect to, or in, a subsequent piece of legislation.
So, this doesn't bond us to 99 years?
It does. It binds us to the 99-year lease, but I don't believe it binds us to all terms of the lease.
Mr. Whittle, you can put your hand down, because this is not an open discussion with the public. We've already had that. This is a discussion among the commission. Go ahead with your point of order. Mr. Howe, I'll ask you to speak to this point of order.
This is not a...
I'm not sure a resident could...
This is not a, yeah, this is not a time for public comment. That would be at the end of the meeting.
You're not recognized, Mr. Whittle. I'll ask you to sit down.
The state of Ohio, a 99-year lease. A 99-year lease in the state of Ohio is treated as a sale at the end of the 99 years. At the end of the 99 years, the lease or has no power over the property, it goes to the leasing.
Mr. Whittle, you're now leaving the building.
Is that true?
No, it's not true. The lease is with the city, if I might respond to that comment. The city is leasing.
Mr. Howe.
It's up to you all, if you want to invite folks for comment or answer questions.
I'm not anxious to get into a debate. Regarding that, I rely on you as the law director to advise us.
On the comment?
Yes.
It would be, it would be a lease with the city. At the end of the lease term, the property would revert to the city.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meiner.
And throughout, you know, I read through the agreement, and almost after paragraph is further negotiations. I'm going to go back to, there's a deadline to put in for state grant. Got to secure the state grant. You got to have the TIF money. You got to get different things in line before you can apply for it. That deadline's coming up. We haven't had time to even sit down and negotiate a lot of that stuff. And as far as the bus and the train, we have talked about that, you know, in the Cedar Point deal. So, again, I'm a rare to rate. So, that's something that came up, and we never, and from the presentation tonight, it was explained that both the trolley and the water taxi helped to secure that state grant. So, I'm sure that's why that was thrown in there.
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Which grant are we talking about? What's the name of this grant?
The TMUD grant.
Is that the one that we, okay. How much is the ask on that grant? What's available?
$20 million, isn't it?
It could be one of 15 or 20 million. That's a state grant. We got awarded a payment for recent project.
Right. I went online, yes. There were, what, 30, 37 requests for that grant, 22 and 13 recipients? Is that correct? It's pretty competitive.
Could be. There's two of them, large city and small city. We need the small city.
20 million is all that's available to all...
We're looking to double that, actually.
They're thinking about doubling it?
Instead of right now, double it.
It's not a whole lot to spread across the entire state of Ohio, $20 million.
But I did see in the literature where...
Commissioner Bajali.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I did see in the literature where they are trying to get more smaller communities to apply, because they funded most of them last time around. So, yeah, and I realize you're under this timeframe, you know, for this TMUD application, so...
And I'd like to share with you a conversation that I had with our law department a while ago now, and that revolved around, this project agreement is not meant to have every piece and parcel nailed down. It is purposely left vague. It has intentions in there. I think Mr. Murray said it best, is it obligates us to negotiate in good faith, the nailed-down terms of this agreement. I think it's unreasonable for any of us to think that we can have every loophole closed and every hurdle jumped at this point in time. We are in the first few steps of a very long journey. That's what tonight is, is the beginning of that journey. But to think that we're going to have every question answered and have every loophole covered, I think that's asking an awful lot. Additional comments?
Mr. Chairman. We're not asking to do every loophole, but these are some big, pretty big holes. And the issue here is not dealing with the developer, it's the fact that we have not, that getting what amounts to quotation marks, the bums rush of this coming through here and having to make a decision off of what was just said this evening is just not... You don't need, you only need, I think, four votes to pass this, so it's, I'm uncomfortable with the process that we have used throughout this thing, throughout this. And I can't, I love the project. I'm not going to vote for this. You can pass it if you wish.
Additional comments, Commissioners?
Details.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I'd like clarity from the law director in terms of whether if we pass this tonight, Maruus has what they need. We passed this on first reading tonight. Does Maruus have what they need in order to be able to apply for the TMUD grant? I don't know the answer to that question. It's an important question to answer.
I would defer the developer to give us some helpful guidance on that. But city support is one of the considerations for those type of competitive state fundings, and a in-place development agreement with a TIF would be strong support and help the scoring of a grant.
Very important. Very critical. You've been working on this development agreement for more than over three years.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I think the critical question is, when it gets scored, and maybe we don't know the answer to this, because there's some discretion in the scoring, but when it gets scored, does it matter if the legislation is still returning for a second vote and a 30-day period before it becomes effective? Or does it need to be effective at the point in time that the grant application is submitted? If we don't know the answer to that question, I respectfully suggest that we should err on the side of safety and make sure that the grant application can be funded, because if it's not, we're going to be missing a huge piece of the funding for this very expensive project, and I don't know of another source to plug that hole.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Just a question. Let's assume this project, I mean, the 20 million that's available, maybe it'll be 40, our piece of that could be anywhere from 10, anywhere from zero to whatever, shared with the rest of the state. Out of a 200-plus, a $200 million project, $178 million project, what happens if they don't raise the rest of the money? What happens to all of this that we've done? If this project doesn't go through, if they don't get the project, what happens? Where do we stand? Do they have a 99-year lease, or what?
Chairman.
What do we have?
Commissioner Murray.
At that point in time, Maruus would need to make a decision about whether they want to continue to move forward if they didn't receive the TMUD grant. It may be that that's enough to kill the project. I don't know.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Tell you what, Mr. Chairman. As I stated, I don't like the way you do business, but for the sake of the community, and because I trust the Maruus brothers, because I've dealt with them in the past, I'll vote to pass this through. But you bring any more stuff through here like this at the last minute claiming it's got to go through, that on a project that's been on the board for as long as this has been, with all these unanswered questions, you know, I will vote, I'll just vote no.
Mr. Myers, you call, roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
No.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Staying.
And now, on the ordinance.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
No.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Staying.
That ordinance is passed by a margin of five to two. That concludes our regular agenda. We will turn to our city manager for his report.
Evening, Commissioners, all his staff. From Public Works, we have, on April 14th, an unfortunate traffic crash occurred at the intersection of Perkins Ave. and Hayes Ave., having complete damage to a traffic cabinet. The equipment needed for the repair has a two-to-four-week lead time, so we don't anticipate it being installed until May or June. Temporary controllers have been installed for the time being. All costs associated with the repair will be billed to the driver's insurance company, but we are seeking emergency approval for the purchase of equipment and installation in an amount not to exceed $65,000. Staff will seek formal legislation once final costs are established. I ask for a motion to approve the emergency.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Myers, you call, roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
The motion is passed.
Thank you. Beginning Wednesday, April 26th, the northbound lane of Columbus Avenue through the underpass will be shifted over to allow for construction work to occur in the northbound lane area. Traffic through the Columbus Ave. underpass will remain one-way northbound only, but the northbound traffic will be traveling on the southbound lane. This construction work is expected to last one to two weeks. During this time, the underpass will remain completely closed to pedestrian traffic until the replacement sidewalk safety railing is delivered and installed. After completion of the construction work in the northbound lane area, our contractor will begin scheduling asphalt work on the roadway. Upon completion of the asphalt work, Columbus Ave. can reopen into two-way vehicular traffic. The East Water Street, also known as Daley's Parking Lot Project, is commencing pavement work starting this week with milling of the existing surface, then the installation of a new asphalt surface. Lastly, a restriping of the lot and installation of updated light poles will complete the facelift of this public parking lot. Concrete planners will be added to the raised island areas for visual improvements as well. The additions to the lot beyond aesthetics, landscape, and lighting include the addition of six parking spaces and a new driveway access to allow better maneuverability around and through the lot. There are several major sewer water and street projects taking place throughout the city this year. Please respect the lives of construction workers trying to improve the infrastructure in our community and be mindful of work zones. A map of all road closures and detours is available on the city's website and updated weekly. Specific project-related updates continue to be provided to affected stakeholders. Water crews have commenced flushing fire hydrants. Periodic flushing of water mains is required to ensure high-quality potable water. For questions, contact the water plant at 419-627-5805. The asphalt plants are now open for the 2023 season. All are encouraged to report potholes by calling 419-627-5884. Residents are welcome to drop off yard waste free of charge at Barnes Composting, 1630 Camp Road in Huron, on Saturday, April 29th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and Sunday, April 30th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. For planning, the Over the Horizon of Lake Erie Public Art Exhibit in Sandusky's Parks, commonly referred to as the Balancing Sculptures, are temporarily on loan to us from the Art and Balance Foundation in Poland. The exhibit will be returned in September. The city of Sandusky and the Sandusky Education Foundation are raising funds to purchase up to five sculptures for a permanent exhibit. For planning, the Over the Horizon of Lake Erie Public Art Exhibit in Sandusky's Parks, commonly referred to as the Balancing Sculptures, are temporarily on loan to us from the Art and Balance Foundation in Poland. The exhibit will be returned in September. The City of Sandusky and the Sandusky Education Foundation are raising funds to purchase up to five sculptures for a permanent exhibit. Community favorites, amount of funds raised, and unit price will be equal factors in determining which sculptures are purchased. Please let us know your favorite by selecting your top five from the following list. Cast your vote for your top five favorite sculptures by answering the survey found For recreation, Sandusky Recreation recently received two grants from the Whitman, Whitman Weber Charitable Foundation. The first grant awarded to Sandusky Rec is the sponsorship of the Whitman Weber Charitable Foundation's Safety Town, which includes an amount of $10,000 for each of the next five years. The funds will be used to continue Safety Town in collaboration with the police and fire departments in the summers of 2023 through 2027. Funds will be used to construct the town's streetscape, pay for materials, and staffing. The second grant from Whitman Weber Charitable Foundation of $6,000 will sponsor this year's Movies by the Bay and in Movies in the Parks. The funds will be used to pay for licensing for up to eight movies on the pier and three to four movies in the park during the 2023 season. I ask for a motion to accept both grants and thank the Whitman Weber Charitable Foundation for supporting the city's rec department.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Objection motion be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion's approved.
And lastly, Sandusky Rec would ask the City Commission for permission to apply for a grant from Humana Healthy Horizons. Humana Healthy Horizons offers grant funding to organizations serving vulnerable populations within area communities. Sandusky Rec would like to apply for up to $2,000 in grant funds to support the 2023 Juneteenth celebration at the Jackson Street Pier on Monday, June 19th. The funds will be used to purchase supplies for the event. I ask for a motion to allow Sandusky Rec to apply for that grant.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Mars, you poll the commission on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
That concludes the report for this evening.
Comments or questions for city manager? Now, we'll move to items of old business. Any items of old business, commissioners? Any items of new business? Any new business, commissioners? Warn you out. Any public comments regarding any item that pertains to city business? Please step to the podium, identify yourself, and give us your name and address and your comments.
Hi, Lisa Mazuka, 14 Barcher Road. I know it's been a long meeting, but, um, the Housing Appeals Board has a vacant, um, alternate seat, and, um, I just was wondering, there's a meeting coming tomorrow, and I'm, that's an important board, and I've seen a couple of the past board meetings, and I'm just hoping, um, maybe you guys can fill me in when you guys are going to. I know you approved, um, a landmark commission board person at the last meeting. I happen to be an applicant for the Housing Appeals Board, and, um, uh, at one point in time, the chairperson and co-chairperson sent me welcome emails, but I haven't actually been appointed there, so, um, just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Mr. Mars, we have an application from Mr. Mazuka on file.
I am not aware of this opening, so I will have to look into that.
Okay. We, we will look into that. Additional comments regarding any items pertaining to city business?
Greetings, Tom Lamarc, 206 48th Street. I am not against this development, uh, but I do think that, uh, some folks maybe not have looked at the agreement that you just agreed to approve, other than perhaps Mr. Pajali, um, and Mr. Paul, because I'm looking at page 19, item L, Sandusky Bay Pavilion Improvement. The city shall take such action as might be reasonably necessary to make at least $1 million worth of public improvements, as determined by the city, to the Sandusky Bay Park Pavilion. The city Bay, uh, Sandusky Bay Park Pavilion shall be one of the city's top priorities. So you stated that it was no rush and not that important, that you'd just be obligated to spend some money. It's supposed to be a top priority. The city will consider any request from the developer regarding the Sandusky Bay Development's improvements during its annual business cycle. And again, it was mentioned that the, the developer's not dictating or telling you what improvements they may want, but then here in the agreement, they will make suggestions, and, um, my guess is that you will follow the suggestions that the developer, uh, will make to you. Uh, also, I mean, if, I'm a former real estate broker, and if I were to write an agreement up for a client with no dollar amounts in the agreement for a lease or a purchase and have them sign it as a blank agreement, I mean, that's what you're really doing. What would, what would I be facing? Um, I just, I'm sorry, I'm not happy with the way the agreement is written. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamarc. Additional comments regarding any items pertaining to city business?
Thank you, Steve, for having some common sense. A contract is a contract, folks. You're signing the contract with some blanks in it, without any, some of the details are missing, and we're throwing in the water taxi and the trolley just so he can go to the state and say, "Looky here, it's in here, it's in the contract." That they're going to do this, this, and this, so I can get a $40 million grant. That's, that's falsifying a, a, a state grant. You people, you don't, what if the city has to do this water taxi and this trolley thing? We don't have money for that. We're running almost $1 million in the red on STS. This is, I've never seen anything like this. You're, you sign a contract and then work out the details later. You all need a kick in the pants for that.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Additional comments regarding any items pertaining to city business?
I'll be on it, I was on doubt earlier. So I just wanted to hit on the mixed use, uh, the affordable.
If we could have a, 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 a name and address.
Okay. It's Mark Harper, 2015 Foxborough Circle. Um, like I told you, I'm very used to being on the other side. I just wanted to hit again on the affordable housing thing. Like I said, from, I'm originally from Columbus, it's a very huge thing. I don't see that being talked about, especially in public meetings. I think it's something that we really need to hit on. Think of alternative methods of funding public housing, whether it's voting on bond packages, um, at the ballot box, uh, you know, looking at alternative state grants, working with developers to, you know, make sure that we have a percentage of every new development, including something on a percentage, I think, things of that sort. One thing I did notice in the development agreement that I actually really don't agree with is, under the recitals, they had mentioned the possibility of the 172-plus or minus market rate apartments, which some are all maybe converted to condominiums in the future. I am full-heartedly agreeing that we need to have the split between the condominiums and the apartments. We need both types of housing. We need many types of housing, um, whether it's duplexes, triplexes, condos, apartments, et cetera. So I don't agree on that end. That was answered from the TIF. Let me go through. I'm a nerd, so I did read through all of this. Another thing I think kind of to push, under Article III, it had mentioned that the developer shall use commercially reasonable efforts to expense construction on a development site within three years from the date of execution of this agreement. I don't think it should take that long from the execution agreement. If the putt is 18 months, why are we adding more than a year, year and a half to that on from the, they're allowed to do construction with? And then, I really just wanted to push, under Article IV, as they go forward with construction, to make sure to keep in thought, um, Sandusky is a legacy city, given its history, making sure that we are including local, um, contractors, trades, also focusing on minority-owned trades and contractors, whether they're women-owned, LGBT-owned, um, black-owned, things of those sorts. Also, potentially, you know, as this is a future project, working with the city schools, career center, eHovi, and trying to attract some of those students into the trades to potentially work on this project, things of those sorts, or later in their apprenticeships, and things of that. And then, I think this was mentioned, because it seems to be a working document going forward on just kind of what that agreement is going to be with the circular trolley and the water taxi.